Ms. Now, Ian. Actually, we didn't have any personnel, did we?
Okay, yes. I'd like to call the July 25, 2008 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order at 6:30. Ms. Morrow, do we have a need for non-public?
Yes, for legal matters.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, minutes of the July 11 meeting. Does anybody have any corrections? Of course, I do.
Yeah.
It's on page two, and I need to see if the board agrees with me. It's the second sentence starts in early June. My understanding in early June, it was the Board of Selectmen that questioned whether the sign loads on the Wolfboro Bay docks could be removed since the repairs to the docks had been completed. Do people agree with me on that? I think we questioned it. I think I had asked whether those signs could come on, which is kind of what started this I'd like it to read that if the board agrees with me.
I'll find it. Okay.
All right. Then I'm going to look on page six, and it's Dave, it's your report. I think it should say he met with Paul O'Brien in reference to Russ Pond. You and I didn't. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that should be Paul O'Brien. Any other corrections or additions? Hearing none, can I have a motion to accept as amended?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain. I wasn't here. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the bulk vote. It's the Weekly Manifest. And the other thing that we have here is a revised temporary event for the Hospital and Community Aid Association Street Fair on August 3 through the 4. This is here because the original application had a map showing a food tent. The food tent has been changed to two food trucks. They have gone through our, with the fire department and what codes and have met with everybody and everything seems to be in order. So does anybody have any issue with that?
No.
If not, I'd like to have a motion to accept the bulk vote.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next thing on the agenda, we have an appointment to have Michael Babylon as a library trustee, and I think I have somebody in the audience who'd like to speak to that. Need to pull it down.
Can you turn it on? Yeah, help remote.
Yes? Okay. Lynda Overton, Chairman, Library, Wolfboro Library Trustees. I'd like to propose Michael Babylon as an alternate trustee.
Regular trustee.
As a regular trustee.
Oh, that's right.
To fulfill Susan Razner's term. Till the next election. And would you like to come up and say anything?
Sure. We'd like to meet you.
I'm Mike Babylon. I've actually lived in Wolfboro two times, so a total of 15 years, 13 years this last time. Been a library patron since day one. No special expertise about renovating the library, but just like to help in any way I can.
Thank you.
I have a comment concerning Mr. Babylon. He's the type of citizen that we need more of. He's a pilot of a wide-body Airbus flying hundreds of passengers. I asked him if he was ready to land on the Hudson River if necessary, and he said yes. But it's very nice to have you here, Mike. I met you, of course, as a library trustee, and you're a great asset to the town.
Would you like to make a motion, then?
I'll move that we appoint Mr. Babylon as a member of the Board of Trustees of the library.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Reggie rebate, and I think we have our Barry Muccio here to address that.
Good evening. Thank you, Barry Muccio from the Municipal Electric Department. Here for my annual request to, number one, accept the Reggie reimbursement money from New Hampshire PUC, and secondly, to approve a rebate amount which will go on, rebated to our customers. The rebate amount at this time will be .003173 cents per kilowatt hour. Doesn't sound like a lot. It'd probably be a couple bucks for the typical customer.
Does anybody on the board have any questions? I think we really do like to accept money to give money back to the taxpayers.
Well, the other thing is if you don't, if we don't rebate it, we can't accept it. So that's part of the conditions of participating in this, so.
Sounds like a good idea. Any member of the board like to make a motion?
I move that. Rebate Reggie rebates to our customers per Barry's calculation and formula.
And that will go from August to December?
August. That's right.
August to the end of the year. So it'll be for usage during the month of August, and it will be for usage to the end of December.
Okay. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Barry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is update on the Library Building Committee.
I'm Cindy Scott. I'm the library director, and I'm here representing the Board of Trustees to give you an update, a general update, on where we are in the library expansion and renovation project. Pretty much since the vote passed, we have been working on taking a conceptual plan and turning it into the actual plan that will go out to bid in a week or so. If you look at the display, you can see that the exterior of the library has changed a little bit. There's a lot of moving parts still on this project. There's a lot of things that are only partially known, but one of the things that is pretty much settled at this point is the way the exterior is going to look and the way the interior is arranged. It's still the same footprint, still the same height, basic same design, but the windows have changed a little. We discovered things like we had to have an additional emergency exit from the front portion, so that's why some of those side windows go down to the ground now because we had to make one of them a door. We discovered we left out a janitor's closet, et cetera. We have a lot of details that we are working on right now with some of the finishes that will be incorporated as well in the plan. The, let me give you the side view here. This is the view from South Main Street. Obviously, the architect has taken out the trees and the telephone poles and things like that, and we anticipate doing landscaping again in the future once the building is This is the interior plan, which has been pretty much finalized, all except for a few minor details. And we are working right now, in particular, on figuring out how we are going to fit all of what we have in the library in the temporary situation when we are just in the front, which, as you can see, is less than half of the existing building. We're working on a location to store materials and also figuring out what square footage we're going to have for stacks and things like that. So there's a lot of logistics works that are going on right now. We have been working with the architect and the construction manager to determine any potential areas where we might have a problem. The construction company has been getting bid estimates, and pretty much most everything has been coming in pretty close to the original estimates, which were developed in 2016, except for the parking lot and landscaping, which is, this is a revised plan. We've had various meetings, Dave Ford met, members of the building committee, construction manager, architect, all working together, trying to come up with a solution. Came in about $100,000 over budget, which we therefore have to reduce the scope of the site plan in the parking lot a little bit. And at this point, we've removed about 10 parking spaces, reduced the size of the island that's in the back so that we're not digging up quite as much territory. This does allow us to pull even further away from Mara Butters, and we do have the option in the future to add back the parking spaces that would be on the lower left corner there should they become necessary in the future as growth continues. This is 63 parking spaces, I believe. Let me just double-check that. 66, I apologize. 65 is the minimum, and 66 is how many spaces we now have. We don't have the final sort of estimate on this, so we don't know if we're going to have to do other compensating. So this is part of what is still out there that we're working on, is once we go out to bid and we get actual numbers, there's a lot of bid alternates in the budget, and that includes the Energy Initiative that you probably saw in the newspaper that the foundation has been working on to increase the energy efficiency of the building. We did design a very energy-efficient building, but this is even more energy efficiency that would allow the building to become net-zero-ready if all of it is incorporated. So let me go to the timeline here. So we're going out to bid early in August, so another week to two weeks. We anticipate that the bids will be back September 2018. We already have a construction company. This is the subcontractors. And what this will do is give us firm numbers, and then the building committee can go through and determine which alternates we can do. For instance, we may have to do some alternates already within the existing $5 million budget, but we also might have to do some alternates based on whether or not we can go from R4 windows to R8 windows, that kind of thing. Then shortly after the bids are awarded in mid-September, we anticipate breaking ground and having some sort of a ceremony with photo opportunities, which all of you will be invited to. And we'll start with the work on the east side of the library where the new parking area is going to be, so that we can maintain the existing parking area while we're under construction in Phase 1, and also they'll work on the new section. They anticipate getting the foundations installed in October and putting the new pitched roof over the whole facility sometime in November, for which we will have to close for potentially up to two weeks. The new section will be completed March 2019. We expect to move into that, and then we will have kind of limited services for a little while there. We are going to up interlibrary loan and move some of our programming offsite, but we will not have the full complement of services that we have now just because of a sheer lack of space. The project is anticipated to finish up in September, though the construction company would like to finish it in August if they can manage to do so. It's a very aggressive schedule. I hope we can do it so that we can get back to normal and even more than normal by a year from September. So one of the things that we are going to be doing, and I'm hoping we're going to have more information, then I had expected to have a much more detailed schedule by today, but unfortunately I haven't received yet, is we are having an open house on Saturday, October 18. I'm going to do a presentation at 10:00 and another one at 1:00. We're going to have lots of people from the foundation, the trustees, the people interested in the Energy Initiative, the friends on Ice Cream Social, Crafts for Children, and we're going to try to identify around the building where the new, what's going to be in that area, and out front as well, what's going to be in the area that's marked out out front, so people can kind of start to get a sense of what the building's going to look like. So hopefully by then, we'll have a lot more information, but we really wanted to give you an update because it has been a little while since we've been in, and as things firm up, I'll come in and do some more updates and keep you up to whatever's going on at the library.
I have a question. Are you going to be taking pictures as we go?
Yes, we have two people, Bob Ness and Russ Chandler, who are, they've already taken pictures of the existing conditions, and I was just talking to Bob today about when things were going to start so that he can, like he did with Town Hall, keep a record of the process, so that we can also get that out on social media. That's where we're amping up our use of social media to prepare for this as well.
Does any other board member have any questions? Any comments? Paul?
Thanks for doing this. It is, it's good to see the progress you're making, and it's actually great to see that you're going to come here a lot and keep us updated. I am not a construction person. I look at the schedule, and my sense is it is ambitious. That's, I'll just park it there. It just seems ambitious. Having said that, is there anything that the, and you don't have to answer these now, this could be an ongoing dialogue. Is there anything the town needs to do to help you get that schedule realized?
There are a few things that are coming up. I'm working my way through the various items of logistics, and I think the, one of the first things I'm going to do is try to figure out when we're closed, where we can put a book drop that people can drive up to. So that's, that's the kind of thing that I'll be coming once I get a few more details firmed up to. In this process, I'm trying to keep things in some sort of organized order because I don't know when some things are going to happen yet, so.
And I, and I, I hope, and I know, I speak for my colleagues, we want this to be an emblem for our town. And I'd like to then just ask maybe a couple of questions about the energy efficiency thing, because I, I'm pretty excited about what you're doing, and I want to make sure I don't get overexcited about it. So as I understand, you want to raise somewhere near $150,000, not by asking the taxpayers, but to go out and ask folks who want to make a contribution so that you can become what is, what may be a net-zero building? Is that?
Net-zero-ready. Ultimately, with solar, it could become a net-zero building. And this is, this, if this initiative had come up before the beginning of the year, we would have added a second Warren article and, you know, brought it before voters.
The good news is you discovered an opportunity
Right.
to get yourself over the goal line, right?
That's, that's correct. So the foundation stepped forward to try to raise the funds that would be necessary to do this, and whatever we are able to raise, we will put into energy efficiencies, which are primarily the insulation, upgrading the windows, and some of the controls on the system, so that it works more efficiently.
And I'm not trying to hold you to a number, but I've, yeah, go ahead.
I just checked up in here, and I'm assuming as you get the money and you're going through the construction, you're not going to hold up any part of the construction if you don't have the money for it.
That's correct. All of this has to be, this is why there's such a rush on it. You know, everything we've done on this project, we've done slowly, over time, with lots of thought and care. This has been a little bit more of a rush because the time limit is, okay, if this is going to happen, we have to know there's some funds there by sometime in September.
Okay. And I think that's important numbers.
And the reason, Madam Chairman, I'm bringing this up is, is, you know, there's always a tendency by some people to say, oh, they just figured out now that they need this extra money. Why didn't they know it earlier? And I think what these folks have done, at least from the little interaction I've had, is this is a discovery. I mean, this is as the, as they've architected the building, they found a way to, you know, find something. So if you raise the 150 by not asking the taxpayers, do I understand that your operating costs are going to go down?
Yes.
So if you raised the 150 by not asking the taxpayers for money and your operating costs go down, that means the taxpayer gets a break by not having as much operating cost going into that building.
And they get a break the first year.
Yeah, but I also understand that if you do get net-zero-ready, five years ago, that was a folly to even think about it. This could be the first net-zero-ready building in our town, our county, and I think we're competing with Peterborough because they want to build a library and make it net-zero. So we could be the first net-zero library in the state. So for the people out there that are watching this, these folks want to raise $150,000 and reduce potentially their operating expense. I think that's a good idea, personally, and I commend you for wanting to do that. And I think it's a, I think it's outstanding that you want to do that.
John, do you want to fill us in a little more here?
John Sandin for the Wolfboro Library Foundation. We've raised approximately $30,000 of that $150,000 already. The other comment that I'd make, you're talking about reducing operating costs in the building. We see by some estimates, these are estimates, that the operating costs in the building would go down $10,000 a year. So your $150,000 can have a really good payback of a very short period of time. Plus, you know, this is money that people are willing to give to push this energy initiative. And, you know, you can look at the building itself and say, well, why wasn't higher? But, you know, they were all trying to meet a very ambitious goal and build a building within a very specific $5 million window. And they knew that that was important in order to pass.
Looking over our shoulder is an interesting thing not to do.
Exactly. So that's, that's.
Well, I think you also had a group come up and help you with something you didn't have before.
Exactly.
And I think that is also very positive in.
We had the Energy Efficiency Committee come up, and the other thought that I have is, you know, now we've got people writing a master plan for the town, which includes energy efficiency, and instead of waiting, we could make the library the very first example of how it's a really good, energy-efficient town. So, you know, Wolfboro can get some publicity out of this as well and say, we have a net-zero building in town.
So cool.
And by the way, Paul, I don't think it's just the first net-zero library. I think it's one of the first net-zero buildings in the state.
You might be right. You know, you might be very right. I just, I was poking around a little bit. I do know that Hanover is now set their, you know, set their sails to be a net-zero town. Portsmouth is doing the same thing. So all of this, again, five years ago, people would have thought we were, you know, smoking something, but it's now practically doable, and the fact that you've set your sights on doing it, I think, is awesome. I still, it still doesn't let you off the hook from the fact, I think the schedule's a little ambitious, so, you know, you gotta, you gotta kind of watch that.
Well, the schedule is ambitious. It's very ambitious, but, you know, we looked at it and said, if you don't start, you can't get anywhere.
Okay, thank you.
And what we do know is that what we get, we will put into energy efficiency. So it's not going to be thrown away.
Yeah.
It's going to go into energy efficiency, and maybe it won't be all of the items that the Energy Efficiency Group has picked out, but it will be the majority of it.
And I have a question for Cindy. I also hope while you look for another place, that you use this wonderful room for some of the, your things that you're missing there. I mean, this is a community space. We've moved aside to have a play here. I am sure we can move to the side in order to let the library use a space like that, and I'm sure the rest of my board will want that. This is for the community up here.
Well, once we are able to identify which days we were hoping to use Town Hall for some of the times that we need to be in other places, maybe be even able to do storytime here, that kind of thing, have a little collection of books. We've talked about a lot of ideas, but we haven't pinned everything down yet. It's still early.
Absolutely. But I just wanted to, you know,
Thank you.
this is here. Community gave it to us.
I just wanted to mention to Paul that when I said to the construction manager, the construction firm, that this was, this seemed like quite the, you know, they originally said 18 months, now they're saying 12 months, he said, this is a little job.
Yeah.
So we should be able to, we should be able to do it in 12 months.
Talk to us after it's done.
He does quite huge projects, too, so.
Is there anybody else on the board who'd like to make a comment or say anything to Cindy or John? Thank you very much for coming to update us. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Public Safety Building Committee Report. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matt Sullivan, Director of Planning and Development. I'm just going to provide a brief introduction of the Public Safety Building Feasibility Analysis and Study, and then I'll pass it off to the chiefs, who will say a few words. Perhaps Selectman Senical would also might like to make a few comments, and then we'll pass it off to our architect on the project, Bob Robichek from Valley Brenzinger. I'm very happy to say tonight we're joined by the chiefs, as well as deputy chief and Captain Livy, as well as some representatives in the fire department, who are intimately involved in development of this feasibility study. I want to provide a brief background to this project. Obviously, most of you are well aware of the process that led before this. The feasibility analysis was commissioned initially in 2018, based on the projected construction year within the capital improvements program for 2022. And we see this really, this document as the first step in the process of developing a plan for the future of our public safety services, including both the equipment, the staff, and other elements of those services that are provided to the community. So a few comments in the scope of this study before we jump in. There were a couple different elements to this. The first element being to analyze the current conditions and potential deficiencies of the existing public safety building, based on operational function issues and code compliance concerns that existed beforehand. The next step was really to develop a space program based on staff projections and existing needs for both the police and fire departments. Following that, we identified opportunities to consolidate and minimize space needs for a potential future facility as available or as possible. We then evaluated the feasibility and how really conducive the existing site was for the building that would be necessary for the space program that we had developed. We then worked to actually develop a conceptual plan, which you have in front of you, and includes a design as well, and we reviewed that in the context of the existing site, as that was really the scope of this project, looking at the existing site as it is on South Main Street. We then worked to, from several options, actually select a preferred conceptual plan, and then worked to scope an actual cost estimation based on that design as well, following the selection of a preferred option. And I want to just note here, the intent is really to develop a plan for a long-term solution for the existing public safety services. What we're talking about here is not a five-year building, it's not a 10-year building. This is a long-term, 30, 40, 50-year solution, based on the projections that we see for the needs of these two services within the community. Before I pass it off to Chief Rondo, I just want to quickly note, too, that the study was not intended to explore the viability or conduct any sort of site selection for other locations within the community for these two services. Additionally, it was not intended to explore the separation of the two departments. That's a conversation that could potentially occur subsequent to this discussion tonight. It was really to look at our existing site and the existing needs, as well as the deficiencies or potential deficiencies of the existing building, and identify a path forward. Now with that, I'm going to pass it off to Chief Rondo to quickly make some comments, and then Chief Pinial will comment as well about their involvement in the process.
Thank you, Matthew. I'm Chief Dean Rondo, the Chief of Police of Wolfboro PD. So essentially, the public safety building as we know it is essentially, in terms of the police department, operationally obsolete. It's not conducive to the operations that we need to run. It's not large enough. We've simply outgrown it. The reality is, the building, in terms of a police department, probably became operationally obsolete back in the late '80s. There are federal and state requirements that we have to meet to do certain things. We can't meet those requirements. That's just, just a fact. If the police commission wanted me to be an accredited police department, or even to try to achieve New Hampshire recognition, I can't do that. I can't do it because the building won't allow me to do it, okay? There are certain things that have to happen within that facility we just simply can't do. So in terms of our operational necessity, I think it's a no-brainer. The building doesn't work. It doesn't work for us. Just about. Just about everything in a building is out of code. The, it was nice in 1972 when it was built. I think the town has got its money's worth out of the building relative to a police department. But at this point in time, I don't think there's any amount of tender loving care that's going to resuscitate it to where we need it. What are your questions?
Oh, you have a question?
Dave, just.
Sure.
To me, the old building is semi-federal architecture. This looks like a warehouse loading dock stuck onto it, and I would think it doesn't cost any more to have an attractive building than an ugly one. And I think, in my opinion, I have sort of an architectural background, it would be nice to have it match the old building and to have some, to be more, this is not aesthetic in any way, shape, or form, why not make it so?
I agree with you. I've, you know, been in the police department talking, even back in the 80s, when I had something to do with an incident at Carpenter School, and it was not, the police department space was not adequate then, and now there's no way it possibly could. And I think everybody in town, or just about everybody in town, realizes that that is too small. So I think this is time to really take a look at this building and decide what we need to do for these two services.
I think you're absolutely right. And what Matthew said, I want to just echo his comments. When we sat down the group on this committee, and we did a lot of hard work, we looked at getting a building that's going to be essentially a 50-year solution. We looked at it with the understanding that, hey, the town is going to grow, the staff is going to grow, the citizenry, the population of Wolfboro is going to grow. So we looked at it in essentially 10-year increments. And I think it was a good call to do that. I think it was, let's get the biggest bang for our buck that we can at that moment and make sure that we're giving the taxpayers the best possible value for the dollar spent. So I understand what your comments are relative to aesthetically pleasing. You know, let's face it, we're talking about institutional buildings. Nothing that we really do is going to be able to blend as well as we would like. I think the option that we selected is a very good one. In terms of a space needs assessment from the police department's standpoint, I can't speak for anybody else other than the police department and Wolfboro Central Dispatch. It really works well for us. The last thing I want to leave the board with, before I take any further questions, is think about, think about this. We're really putting two and a half departments in that building, right? You've got fire, you've got police, and you've got Wolfboro Central Dispatch, right? That's really essentially two and a half departments. So we're putting an awful lot of personnel in that building, and it's doing some amazing functions, right? We're serving as the central dispatch, the communications hub for the entire town of Wolfboro. We're serving as the public safety and EMS response cell for the town of Wolfboro, and we're providing the law enforcement and the total public safety package for the town of Wolfboro. Those are really, really important functions. You know, and I can go on and talk about safe and secure environments and having the right facilities to do the job, all that comes with this proper facility. That's why it's so critically important. Having said that, ladies and gentlemen, that's all I really have. I'll subject you to any questions. Yes, sir.
So, and I agree with the chairman, you've outgrown the size, the aesthetics of the building. Those are all things that are important. My question is more along the, your opening comments. You said something, you're not an accredited police department, and you don't, and so what's the price we pay for not having one?
Share pandemonium?
Can you not compete for grants? You don't get grant money? Do you don't, you know, if there's perquisites out there that we're supposed to go after, we can't get them because you don't have accredited?
All right. So let me address that in specific. So right now, for example, when I make an arrest on someone who's even semi-combative, because let's face it, right, not everybody wants to be arrested, right? I mean, right? Am I right? Not everybody wants to be arrested. Generally, it's not a very pleasant experience.
I would say so.
Okay. So people, so some people, right, are just prone to resist. Okay, so when that happens, we have somebody that is combative, or semi-combative, or agitated. We take them out of town, we go to Ospey, and we process them at the county jail, all right? So you may only have two police officers on duty, and one is going to be up at the county jail transporting a prisoner, because that is the only place that's safe enough to do so. Okay? If I bring in a prisoner, which has happened before, and that prisoner wanders out of the evidence room, or wanders out of the processing room, they have full range and access to the public safety building. They go upstairs, they go downstairs, they go on to Wolfboro Central Dispatch, they can go visit the firefighters, who are probably upstairs sleeping. No, no offense, chief. And that's not good. That's not good. That's just not good, right? You don't, you know, you don't want to be woken up at 3:00 in the morning and there's a deranged prisoner staring at you. So these are the things that we really have to take into consideration, right? Personnel safety, right? And we have to somehow mitigate that. The House of Corrections, and all of it aside, the House of Corrections has the correct state and federal guidelines in place, because when they built that facility, they built it with those in mind. And there's a reason those are in place. It's to protect the employees as well as the citizens who are coming in to be processed. Evidence, storage, and security is another concern. Recently, one of my detectives did a great job on a felony DWI crash where a citizen was permanently injured, paralyzed. And we took some substantial challenges because the vehicle, according to defense counsel, was improperly stored, okay? And now, we won those, but it was a battle. And the last thing I want to do is look at the victim or a victim's family and say, gee, you know, I'm really sorry we lost this case because the evidence was improperly stored. The reality is, it's improperly stored, not because we're lazy, or we're lackluster in our performance of securing and tagging evidence, just we just don't have the proper facilities to store it the way it really needs to be. So these are just a couple of examples, and I can go on and on and on, but we're really talking about safety and security. So absent the right facility, absent a facility built with the considerations that I think you're going to hear here in a moment, we're really doing our citizens a disservice.
Thanks, chief.
But I think the other thing is that even with that building that's not adequate, you provide Wolfboro with a very good service, and I think the people feel that. Yes, we need to do this. And when you say you darn it certified, or you're not, can't do this, I don't think you want, you're saying to the people, you don't provide the service. We're only talking about a facility here.
Correct. And what we're trying to do is put in a permanent fix, right? I want to keep those officers in Wolfboro. I don't want them transporting prisoners to Ospey if I don't have to. And I'm talking about to the House of Corrections. I want to keep my officers in Wolfboro. It's a matter of efficiency, it's a matter of safety. I mean, let's face it, there's only so many officers on duty at any one point in time. I don't want an officer out of town for 15 or 20 minutes if I can avoid it. I would rather have them be able to secure a prisoner, which I can't do, by the way, at the Wolfboro PD, want to be able to secure somebody if I have to respond to another incident. Right now, we can't do that. We can't, we can't process or hold juveniles, right? We can't do it. And the reality is, that, that building has been out of code for that purpose since the mid 80s. So these are the things that we have to keep in mind, all right? These are the federal requirements, the codes, the laws that are in place. They're in place to protect us, protect the town, and protect the individuals that we're processing. It's just better this way.
Okay, anybody else?
Just to clarify my comments, I'm 100% behind this project, have been, look at these plans, but I do think that aesthetics are important. A library is a book warehouse, but it doesn't look like a warehouse. It's very nicely done from the outside. When you drive by this, it looks, it looks like a freight depot, and there's really no reason it has to. You could put a brick facade on it or something without paying any more money, so I would just hope that they would do that. You know, we've had a lot of complaints about Huggins Hospital, which we haven't done because it's not a town facility. But we have a lot of beautiful buildings in town, Carpenter Schools, excellent example, a new, a brand-new church fits in very nicely, and it would be, doesn't cost any more to have this, be a beauty spot, in my opinion, okay?
Sure, I understand your comments and your concerns. I'm sure that there are ways to address the aesthetic issues, and I'll leave that to the architects to discuss. I'm not an architect.
And I guess we're ready for Chief Pinio, for our Chief Pinio. Thank you very much, Dean.
Thank you.
Matt, thank you. Chief Rondo, thank you. Chief Pinio, Wolfboro Fire Rescue. I'd like to just focus on the fact that when we dove into this project, it was very challenging to stay within the scope of the project. The planners and the architect did a really good job at containing us department heads to stay within the scope of the project, which was difficult. And we understood, and we still understand, that it was very relative to the site, site-specific. We were not going beyond that. For us, some of the shortcomings, the apparatus bay is difficult for us. When that apparatus bay was built, there was not cab overdesigned fire apparatus. What that means is, to access the engine compartment, we have to raise the cab of the truck up. In doing that, we don't have the height in the building to be able to accommodate that so the crews can work on the apparatus appropriately, which is very problematic. I think we've discussed it going forward, the ladder truck, the height clearance on the ladder truck in the future is going to be problematic for us. Protective clothing, there's numerous standards. We need to be able to segregate our protective clothing from the apparatus bay, but it also needs to be segregated from the living quarters of the firefighters. One of the big things in the fire service today is cancer. So we're trying to focus heavily on that. So we wash our gear regularly. We keep it remotely located from where the living quarters are. We try to tie in shower facilities so that when they go from the apparatus bay, they go into a shower facility and then into the living quarters. Right now, they have to go from the apparatus bay into the living quarters upstairs to be able to take a shower, and as a result, they're tracking a lot of those carcinogens into their living quarters, which is problematic. As far as the business function of the department, we're just, we're running out of space. It works for us right now, but going forward, we're going to have some difficulties. The deputy fire chief who takes care of a lot of plans reviews, he doesn't have the space to be able to lay out a set of plans with stakeholders to be able to work with them on those plans efficiently. And I think we all understand the struggles with the emergency operations center. It's, we've got some accessibility problems with it. It does not operate well as a modern EOC, and that's challenging for us. I think what you'll see going forward is all of those items have been identified. I think I can stand up here and say that it was a challenging but wonderful process to see the teamwork that came together of the town departments was great. And, you know, this is very early stages. We have a long ways to go before we bring this project to where the library is today. If you've got any quick questions, I'll try to answer them.
Any board members have any questions? I want to thank the team that did the work. This gives us a look at what can be done on that site, and that I think is the thing we've got to keep on saying, is that that, you know, I think you used every space of that site.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, okay. I don't see any questions from...
Mr. Senical, do you have anything that you'd like to add, being on the committee?
Well, just, just that there were quite a few different options before. We came up with the option that you'll see in these plans. There were three basic options that we ended up with, and we finalized one that we felt would utilize a lot more efficiently, and also get the separation between police, fire, and the dispatch, so that everybody was happy with what was designed, and I think that's what we came up with.
Right. Thank you very much, Selectmen, and also everybody watching at home. My name is Bob Robichek, and I'm the studio leader for Civic Municipal Full Valley-Brenzinger. Actually, the same firm was doing the library project, which is a civic project. I'm the project leader on this project, and I work with several consulting firms, engineering firms, including Underwood. We'll talk about that in a minute. And my sidekick, Alice, who is actually expecting her third child, a daughter, in three weeks, so she couldn't be here tonight. But everybody on the committee, we worked together for six months. My background is, I bring about 30, almost 38 years of municipal civic experience, and my specialty within that, for most of that time, has been public safety, having done a lot of public safety projects, specifically law enforcement, but also fire as well. I wanted to thank everybody who was involved in the process, Becky, who came on at the end, Selectman Senical, Chief Rondo, Chief Pinio, Assistant Chief Azadi, Captain Lively, Matt Sullivan, of course, David Owen, who is now retired. And when we first got hired, and I first spoke to David about a week or two after we started, he, everybody who knew David would know his sense of humor, said, you're probably not going to fit this on this site. So I guess we sort of maybe proved that wrong. But what I'm going to do is I'm going to walk you through this process that we went through. A little bit's going to be redundant with what Matt, it's not here, what Matt talked, oh, there he is, Matt. Matt did. And I'm going to try to give you about 12 to 15 minutes, a rundown of what we did. I totally understand Selectman Bowers' thoughts, but we've got to remember, this was not, we're not anywhere near, as Chief Pinio said, the level of design where the library even was six months ago. This was an existing conditions assessment, a programmatic needs assessment, and really a site test fit that then later we looked at some blocking. This is not meant to be a final design, it's not close to it, okay? But he had to give us enough information that we could then generate what we did here for you, including some budgeting at the end of it. So I'm going to go through this. I'll be happy to, you know, go through some reasonable, I'm not going to read everything that's in your packet. I'm going to hit the highlights, and then if you have any questions, I'll be, you know, more than happy to help. So one of the first things that I want to talk about is sort of the process, and you, Matt, you talked about it, Matt, a little bit. I'm going to use this laser pointer, hopefully I won't hit anybody in the eye. The current building was built in '74, so it's almost 45 years old. The average lifespan of this kind of building is less than 50 years. And one of the reasons is that a police or fire building is used 24/7, three shifts a day. So a building that's 50 years old, or 45 years old, that was a, is a police or fire, is actually 140 years old. You know what I'm saying? Because it gets used nonstop. So this building is kind of at the end of its life, but the biggest issue with this building is that programmatically, operationally, it just didn't function anymore. I agree that probably passed its usefulness in terms of operational needs somewhere in the late 80s, probably early 90s. The first thing that we did was we did a space analysis, and that was done concurrent with the evaluation of the current building. I know you can't read this, but it's in your packets. The space needs analysis was done very proactively and very collaboratively, working with the commission, the chiefs, their deputy chief, and the captain, and with Matt, Selectman Senical, and at the time, David Owen. And we basically brought our knowledge of programmatic standards for these kinds of buildings for similar-sized towns, okay, in northern New England, and applied them. We worked very, very hard, and I think Chief Pinio basically alluded to the fact that we worked very hard to, once we had a program document that talked about the overall square footage, we really cut back on that as much as we could. I'll talk about that in a minute. Once we had the assessment of the facility done, and once we, including the site, and once we did, had a program that was signed off on, then we proceeded with basically the last step, which is the step number three, as you mentioned, Matt, which is a test fit of this program on the site. And that was, you know, was a challenge. The site had some good things about it. One is that it basically, you know, was flat, it didn't have a wetlands, it didn't have any water issues. It's a municipal campus, a library, it was on a main road, I mean, a lot of things going for it. The existing building itself is not really in terrible shape. I mean, envelope's sort of okay. The plumbing fixtures, ADA-wise, is not compatible. Electrical systems are very old. I mean, the building itself has been sort of cobbled together over many, many decades now as some improvements have been done, you know, here and there. Also, most notably, and I think recently addressed at some level, was that the equipment base had some structural issues, probably because those trucks are so much bigger than they used to be. So, I'm sorry, I've got two clickers here and I've got to remember which one I, there we go. So, other things about the building that there were brought up in existing conditions report and there's a separate report on that and we're going to deliver the whole final package to the town via Matt next week sometime, which incorporates this presentation. Everything that's been done to date will be in one single PDF that can be printed or put online to your, to your community as you wish. Couple of other things about this building was no emergency lighting, for example. The fire alarm is newer, so that's a good thing. And also, the sally port doesn't have ventilation. I mean, it's not really safe. So, nonetheless, I mean, it is what it is. I think there's some attachment to this building. It doesn't look too bad from the road. And I think you'll see that when we selected the final option, as Selectman Senical said, we looked at multiple options. We looked at multiple renovation addition options. We looked at a whole new building, which would have been at the back of the property. All of it, all of it trying to figure out how we could fit this program and really work on the site and work within the parameters of the neighbor, which is a library, the street, and the curb cuts, which are critical on your road. It couldn't just cut anywhere we wanted, you know, and everything else that goes with it. So, the selected option, which you see a very tiny, there's more of it coming in a minute. You see this little, you know, we call it postage stamp size, size drawing, had some real positives to it. It keeps the existing building in place. It's a familiar facade. It provided much-needed additional space, operational space, as both chiefs mentioned. It provided security on-site, and I'll talk about that in a minute, which is very, is much more complex with this kind of facility than it is for just any other regular municipal facility. And replaces the undersized equipment base, which really don't fit the equipment, as the chief said, and that's a, that's a real problem. Those trucks are very expensive and they need to be properly housed. The other thing about this is that in the selected option, which was option number three, it allowed the facility to remain operational during that time, much like our library neighbors, which was important because it costs less money to have people stay there and work than trying to find some alternate site to put, you know, to put them in. The site layout, basically, and I'm going to fast forward to the site layout. This is the program. So, I just want to talk about the program for a minute. The program itself came out to approximately twenty-nine, this is projected out to 2032. But I do agree with statements that were made that this is a forty, minimal forty-to-fifty year facility. And so, what we did originally is looked at current needs, which is the 2018 column, which is right here. We looked, using the standards we've talked about, these are industry standards. We looked at ten years out, 2022, and then we looked at 2032. But I think we decided based on population projections, right, Matt, that it was going to be pretty much the same going forward. So, we, I think the chief felt comfortable that this would carry us to the forty, forty, fifty-year mark, as far as anybody could see. A couple of things about, about the site layout on this thing. Well, the other thing I want to point out on the program, and I'll go to the site in a minute, is that the largest part of this facility, in terms of sheer square footage of the project, are the equipment base. The equipment base take up, including the twenty percent circulation factor, about ten thousand square feet roughly, which is over thirty-three percent of the whole, you know, program. That houses the various trucks and other firefighting equipment that was listed in detail by Chief Pinio. So, that was designed around that whole parameter, okay? Couple of things about the site layout in general. The, I'm going to fast forward to that. This is actually Underwood Engineering's, the same engineer that did the libraries, doing the library with us. That was incredibly helpful and they had a lot of knowledge of this site. They did a really good job. And just briefly, before I get to the architectural site plan, this is the footprint of the building. I'll talk about it in detail in a minute. This was the predetermined curb cut, which is existing, and that was very important. The aprons for the fire department are facing this way, where it didn't face into the street. And then, the key things here, I think on an engineering plan, so to speak, was there's a sewer line that runs right through here, which would be relocated. You see that right there? Right now, it runs roughly about here. And then, we were able to save a lot of these trees in the back and some landscaping that's there as a buffer to our neighbors to the side, which is really nice, and putting the most of the building to the front. And so, that was a very nice bonus, we think, because there's a nice row of trees back there. The, the red indicates the turning radiuses for the largest equipment that we have. We wanted to make sure that the equipment, in the case of a blockage at the center section, and that's something you have to consider when a public safety building, is an accident or something blocking it, there would be a possible emergency exit through what would be whatever the final design of the library parking lot would be, but that would be just strictly for an emergency access only, would not ever be used otherwise. And we did work with Matt and Underwood and some of the folks involved in that, but we don't want people to think that we'll be driving through the library parking lot. That is not the case. So, the overall, the overall layout of the site briefly is basically that, the way you see is that the setback line works very nicely to line the potential addition and building addition renovation with a library. There's a setback line right here. And this is a library, you can see here the expanded footprint of the library, and they're very much in line there. As you'll see, in terms of just the massing of it, they're almost identical masses in terms of their height and shape. That's what I wanted to say. This was not a detailed design study. We wanted to see how the, I'll get to that last, but how the massing would work, just so we understood how it would work, to make sure that we're good neighbors, we're our neighbors, and also to this main street. So, basically, how this is laid out in general is that you have the, you have equipment base here. The aprons are fully functional. We worked very closely with Chief Pinio on his largest equipment to make sure that the turning, and with our engineers, to make sure the turning radiuses work just fine and they do. The nice thing about that is it doesn't put all the bays and all the aprons onto the street. It's kind of shielded from that. The existing building is this red rectangle right here, and then the addition to the building is in the back. It's two stories. I'll get to that in a minute. The way this is organized in terms of a public safety, a public safety complex, if it's designed properly, has multiple access points and security areas. You have a public area, you have employee area, and you have secure vehicle holding, which the police chief, Rondo, kind of alluded to, but they don't really have that right now. And so, what happens here is that this is just fire only. Public comes here and employees come here, including fire and police. There's a visitors' parking area right there, which, we worked on parking council, the entire committee, to make sure the parking council are reasonable. And this services, I'll talk about in a minute about the public area of the building. And then, this air, beyond this point right here, this is only fire, parking, police cruisers, and police employees, and also a three-vehicle holding area, which is outside, it's outdoors, for vehicle impound, which you don't have right now, and that's what Chief Rondo was talking about. The way the building is, just on the block plans, the way the building is organized and the way the building would be implemented actually is in a reasonably simple approach, would have to be worked out with a construction manager, but the way it would keep the building operational is that we would first build the equipment base, which are right here. This is the building right now, this box right there. We build the equipment base and all the back-of-house fire support that goes with it, okay, including a host tower. And then, we would demolish the current equipment base, which you see is a red line right here, build this two-story addition, which would be, is predominantly all police, move the police out of here, the fire would be out of here, and then renovate this building completely. So, the building would be completely gutted from the inside and redone from the inside, but keeping the shell and the roof shape and everything the way it generally is right now, architectural, okay? The way the building is organized, as I mentioned briefly, is that these are the equipment base and so the, this is the business end of the fire, the fire department. The public side, which is the lobby, dispatch, fire department plan review for people coming in to review building plans, a police interview room, and the EOC, which is double, can also double as a smaller community room, but it's an EOC with a kitchenette and storage, are all off the public lobby right here. One of the things that was critical in planning this building conceptually was, you have three parts, just like the parking, you have three parts. You have a public side in the front, you have a police side, you have a fire side, and then you also have a combined, some sharing of space. And this project, which combines the fire and police, that's what we were asked to do, has about ten percent shared programmatic space. If you go back to the program, I'll show you, you can see that in a program so you can reference it. This, this up here was a shared space, okay? But in addition to that, the other thing that's really a big positive about this potentially shared facility is that the site development cost, the parking, the support systems, the utilities, were also shared and there are savings to that than rather doing two separate buildings on two separate lots. So, there's a good synergy to that. So, the police back-of-house business end, which is the sally port and booking intake, dispatch, armory, and all of that stuff, tends to be on this side of the building, right here on the first floor. And then, when you go upstairs, these are administrative offices and detectives and all of that stuff, that, all the functions that support the police department, and a shared facility here, which is the agility room, the physical agility room, which has locker rooms and showers next to it and so forth. So, this would be a shared facility and we worked very diligently with both chiefs and the commission, the committee, to basically make sure that, again, as Chief Rondo mentioned, even though fire and police work for the same town and they're under the same auspices, there are pretty strict rules about people from, except from fire department on the second floor wandering into detectives' area or squad areas because of evidence holding and interrogations, things like that. So, the building was very thoughtfully blocked in the way it is to allow for that separation while maximizing the combination of these and the common areas that could be shared, So, the last piece of it, and this is why I wanted to make sure that people understood what we were charged with and what we weren't charged with, is we really wanted to look at the massing and we were very, you can see here the library, this is almost identical shape to it and almost identical height to it. We wanted to make sure that the program itself, as it's implemented in this option three, at least in terms of massing, and that's the proper term to use, massing, was going to be pretty friendly to also the existing building, the library building, and everything else sort of around it, and also to the neighbors on this side because it pulls the, it doesn't push the building to the back anymore than it has to. So, we were mostly just looking in terms of aesthetics, in terms of massing aesthetics at this piece of it. The back piece, we're looking at something that could be slightly more modern. We didn't show slope roofs. But again, this is not a design exercise beyond just the massing that we did. We are not even close to where the library was even six, eight months ago in terms of doing their design. I think it just showed that this could eventually fit on the site and do so pretty well and be able to actually continue occupying the building while it's being phased, as well as keeping the current building, which people on the committee felt it might be important to show the community that we're keeping a piece of that, of that building. This just shows, this is just a quick walk-around in, on a CAD system, but this is basically is the existing building and this would be the community room. This would be the new entrance. This is the equipment base. Again, the roof line, the setbacks, the heights of these are almost identical to the new library addition. And last but not least, this is just a very rough rendering. It's not meant to be a finished design. It's not meant to be any of that. We fully understand that we're going to, if this proceeds further, we'll be looking at all kinds of penetrations and all kinds of things we can do to basically soften what is the equipment base. But in reality, the shape of this and the height of it is not any bigger than a library. It's almost, you can see, it's almost identical. And you can see how it kind of works with the current building. We're not implying any certain architectural style to this. We know this is a Georgian revival. We understand, you know, all of that. And we do show something conceptually at the corner where the community room slash EOC would be and the entrance would be right here. Last but not least, of course, the budget. I know you probably can't read this button here. The budget was prepared by one consultant that we use on almost all our New Hampshire public safety projects, Jobin Construction Consultants. They're located very close to us in Manchester area. Mark has done anywhere from eight to twelve similar budgets on similar facilities in the last two years, so he has some good benchmark information. This basically, again, we did a basis of design document, a very simple basis of design, which would be in the final package that you guys are all going to get through Matt, that basically tried to narratively explain, for everybody's sake, including Mr. Jobins, what the level of quality of this building would be. It's not a Taj Mahal. I would compare it very similarly to the library in terms of being a masonry building with some slope roofs, you know, windows, penetration. In terms of the systems, you know, we took into account the fact that you have to meet the energy codes and the ashtray codes in a very conceptual way so this building would, you know, the level of finishes or whatever would pretty much built into something of a mid-range building, definitely not a Taj Mahal or a gold-plated project. And basically then, what, we worked with the consultant team, including Underwood, and we all worked with Jobin to come up with these numbers. It came out to approximately three hundred and eight dollars a square foot projected for 2018. That includes a ten percent contingency because you would carry that at this very preliminary programming phase. That contingency would go down as you go through the process, like in construction documents for libraries, that could be down to two percent or something. And we did look at soft costs, which also impact the overall project cost. I'm not going to go through them in detail, but we've been using anywhere from fifteen to seventeen percent. We went to the sixteen percent. That includes a whole litany of stuff that would add to the bottom line of the project. And then, at the very bottom, what we did is we escalated and that's where your document's a little different than what's up there. It's escalated to 2021. So, you can see there also the impact of the current projected market conditions and drivers on a 21 implementation. So, that's, that's pretty much it. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Can you show the picture of the addition again?
Sure.
In my opinion, if you just took the facade of the, of the front building and made a similar facade across here, bays, maybe making it a brick and making the roof line the same, you already, you would eliminate your dormers with windows.
Can I ask you a favor? Can you speak into the mic because it's hard to?
And, pardon?
Can you speak into the mic? I'm sorry for you.
If you were to take the facade of the existing building, which is brick with windows, and have the same design across the front, except for the bay windows, and eliminate the dormers and have second-floor windows, it would probably match pretty well, especially if the color was the same and the roof angle was the same without changing the interior much, much at all, and I think it would make it much more attractive. I mean, that's my opinion.
I just want to point out, thank you very much. I just want to point out that that's a one-story space because that's the fourteen-foot-six fire trucks.
Well, it could be, it could be, it could be a fate just like the dormers are.
Sure.
You could just have a display windows there.
Yeah, no, we, we agree. I mean, this, again, this is a massing. We were just curious to understand ourselves on the committee as well, how this program, as you, as we stacked it and laid it out on floor plan, would look in three dimensions roughly because we wanted to make sure that we end up with a three-story, eighty-foot-tall, it's not clearly, that would tower over its neighbors. That was not. We were very aware of the neighbors, the library neighbors. Obviously, we're working on that project. We're also aware of the neighbors behind the property and that's why this options can also to work the best, but we totally appreciate that input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other member on the board who'd like to make any comment? Seems like you've done a great job here putting this all together and does show us we could, if that's our choice, get a public safety building on this lot.
I wish David was here to see it.
Yeah. I'm sure we can get it to him.
You want to go on TV?
When you get the whole, when you get the whole pack... When you get the whole, when you get the whole package, uh, hopefully by a week from tomorrow or a Friday, it's, 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 it's pretty much everything we've done. It's a lot of paper. This was just a, an attempt to give you, uh, an overview, or as Chief Pino said, a brief. Uh, it's, it's a brief, uh, you know, and, um, it's hard to try to cover all that in 12, 15 minutes, but hopefully you got the, you know, flavor for it.
One more comment. I think we're all lucky, you're lucky. Uh, the Town Hall went through many contortions to get funded, as you know. The library was funded with 80% of the voters, and I think that if this, a project had come up six years ago, it'd be voted down immediately, and I think that you have, you know, with good planning as you're doing, you have a very good success of having the electorate approve of it.
No, thank you very much. We appreciate your input, uh, Selectmen Bowers, too.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure, it was a pleasure and hope to see that go forward. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Kudos to committee, they were terrific.
Good, I'm, we're always glad to hear that. All right, uh, the next item on the agenda is authorize the use of the Libby Museum lawn for wedding. Hello there.
Well, you are thanked for all you do.
You may need to pull that microphone down for me now.
All right, so, my name is Megan DeCato, lived here my entire life. I'm a preschool teacher up the street at the Children's Center, and in two weeks, I am getting married, and I, we would like to do it across the street from the Libby Museum. Um, we've already talked to Alana Albi at the museum, she's given us her permission. Um, she's also offered the use of some of the antique benches, actually from this hall, um, that she has stored up there. We're talking 30 people, tops, ceremony only, an hour, tops, starts at 1:00, we'd be out of there by 2:00. Um, no flowers on the ground, no extra decorations, just very small, in and out, married and gone to a cookout. So, that's basically what we're looking for permission for.
Hey, uh, that is a public land, we can say yes, but we can't stop other people from going in.
Right, and that's what we talked to her about, I mean, they're still gonna be open for operation and everything. Um, we did kind of float the idea of signs maybe at either end saying, you know, you know, quiet please, ceremony in progress, that we would just take with us when we left. Um, but it is on a slope, so the sound is kind of buffered, we don't really hear much. We did go down and do a walk around, um, we had to make sure it was wheelchair, wheelchair accessible for my fiance's father, um, but otherwise, it's very simple.
Hey, board members, does anybody have any questions or concerns? Hey, hearing none, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the use of, uh, the Libby Museum property for August 11th, 2018, for, for Megan DeCato to have her wedding up there. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You've got your wedding venue and, um, good luck.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Can't promise the weather, so.
Yeah, well, and the good thing about that, she has the gazebo right up next to the building.
True.
So, if it rains, we're going into the gazebo, she's already planted it, it's already ready to go.
Good, very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's cool.
Okay, uh, Brad, we're going on to old business, do you have any, uh, updates on the building committee for the Libby Museum?
Um, yeah, I've been in, in contact with, with Becky on getting a, the first meeting set up. We're shooting, we're gonna have it on August 2nd, I believe that's the date we picked, Thursday, August 2nd at 6:30. We're gonna get the committee together, uh, we're gonna meet up at the Libby, and we just talked tonight briefly about what we're gonna go over, pretty much, our plan is just gotta get caught up to where we're at right now with it, so everybody gets, sees where we are, and then kind of move on from there and stuff, see where, where Chris is with the plans and stuff, and the, on the feasibility study, and, uh, kind of just, you know, get a foot in the door, so.
Sounds good. Alrighty, next, uh, item on, and this is old business, asset management plan. Becky, do you have any update on that?
Only that we're having a demonstration on the building portion of asset management plans tomorrow, and we have developed a spreadsheet that identifies every existing asset management plan, and we're in the process of assigning each plan to an individual, where the plans are complete. Where the plans are not complete, we are going to get you a, uh, anticipated completion date.
Beautiful, beautiful.
What time is that tomorrow?
Yeah, I was wondering.
Um, let me look.
We have something tomorrow night that's seen.
Yeah, you did, I'd love to.
Can I have your pictures in the time?
Okay.
Okay, now I'm gonna, no.
I'm gonna look down while you, while you do that, right?
No, I'm, you're not gonna. I'd like to have a little file of pictures, in case I need to write.
That'll be the 26th.
Um, it starts at 10:00 and we planned two hours, so from 10:00 to noon. I, it'll be somewhere in this building, I don't know where.
Um, are you gonna be going over the different programs you can use, or, uh, what do you?
So, we're going to look at the utility cloud.
Oh, utility, okay.
So, we're actually gonna be in the nitty-gritty, in the weeds.
Okay.
Looking at the information that goes in to the cloud, and, uh, we're trying to ascertain whether or not that's the best program to put building information in. We know it's very good for public works, it's very good for drains, water mains, and sewer, but it may not be the best vehicle to put asset management plans for buildings in. And so, we don't know whether we're gonna have to turn the ship or not, and put the asset management information for Abenaki and this building, whether we'll continue to use that utility cloud or not. So, I don't know enough about the utility cloud, so I'm coming up to speed on that.
Okay.
And, um, we will report back.
Okay.
The good news is you're looking into it, which is great. Thank you for doing it.
Elbow deep.
All right, sounds good. I, when we first started looking at him, I went, and we, they brought us a whole lot of different programs.
Yeah.
That you could use for it, and I think this is obviously more of an upgrade than there, but I mean, you could have just about everything and work orders and everything can come off of these asset management plans. Okay, uh, any more information on the Railroad Depot building? You have that on here, or is that?
Well, I, I just, um, I think we should start having some preliminary discussion about the space that was vacated by the nursery school. There is no, uh, immediate need to, to make a decision, because that space is occupied for the summer until September. Then, we'll need to talk with the chamber about what their needs are, figure out whether they want to use that additional space, discuss the per squa, per square foot cost to utilize that space, and, uh, try to figure out what the highest and best use is for such a great building.
I, I'm wondering whether we also shouldn't take a look, um, at the possibility of expanding the bathrooms down in that area, um, as part of that, look of that building as a whole. Um, I know that, uh, we have had concerns, and I've gone down there, and people are waiting outside in the summer to even get in.
Oh, wow.
So, I think that there is a, a need to take a look at that, so I'd like that added to.
That'd be a good idea.
Yeah. Any other, Selectmen, have any other ideas about that?
I agree with that.
Okay.
Do you think, would you, Mary's here tonight, would you have any preliminary ideas or suggestions?
I promised her I wouldn't put her on the spot.
Yeah, I just would.
It was on me, Mary.
No.
She asked, she said, Brad, you do it.
No, thank you for, um, Mary DeBries, sorry. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, but really, it's, uh, Linda Murray is the Selectmen's representative on our Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, so Linda will be a part of any conversations that we have. Um, and I think we would very, our Board of Directors would very much welcome the opportunity to maybe just forward some thoughts, um, because we've been actually in that space for so many years, uh, year-round, and I, I guess the only comment I could make really tonight is to echo what, um, Chairman Murray said about the use of the public bathrooms in that area. Uh, it'd be important, I think, to have that included in any conversations, maybe, but it is a beautiful building and, and a well-loved area of the community, and the building is a setting for a lot of photographs as well, so the outside of it is, is doing well. But, thank you.
Paul, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just, uh, you said you wanted to, yeah, to Mary, you're gonna forward along some thoughts, and that's great. You've been there a long time, so you know what works, you know what needs to probably work differently or a little differently. Your, your point about it being a, to quote an old term, a Kodak moment place is right, a lot of people take photographs there. So, when you, when you advance your, your ideas, would you kindly give us some thoughts about things that we should invest in to keep that building or to make that building, whatever the right word is, you know, an, an emblem of our town, and, uh, you know, what kind of improvements you think we should engage in above and beyond, you know, the, the bathrooms, because we, we think that's a big one. But if there's something else that you think is important for us to look at, let's, let's put, put it on the table, so we can, uh, we can take a look at it.
If I could comment briefly then to that.
Sure, absolutely.
Uh, it wasn't by accident that I mentioned comments on the outside of the building.
Right.
There's, there's been a lot of challenges over many years with, um, the way the inside of the building is, just, it's, uh, layout, if you will, and then the amenities, if I could, if I wanna call them that, where in, anyone using the inside of the space is, we've all, anyone who's been a tenant there, all of, both of us, we've just made a lot of accommodations.
So, we've heard.
So, it's, you know, and it's, oh my gosh, we are so thrilled to be in that space, and we feel, you know, we've done, over the years, our Chamber of Commerce Board has done some ex, um, gone through some exercises about being in that location and in that building, and we really would love to stay there, we think it works great for the information center and all around, but the inside, it's, um, I invite anyone to come in and tour that, our side anytime.
Send along, send along your thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
As women lords, I would also say, you know, that it is a historic building, it's drafty, um, there probably could be some improvements for insulation, windows, doorways, that sort of basic need. I know a lot of improvements were done in the past in putting the oil drum outside and fixing the crawl space and, but we do know the interior bathrooms will need to be re-modified, because they were, it was a little people's bathroom, and now we're gonna make it a big people's bathroom, I think. I think we should. So, there are some, some things to sort of chew on.
Yep.
Um, the only other remarks that have been made to me, uh, is that I'll need some more background on the history of the playground in, in the sea of pavement, and whether, I understand that that came about because the nursery school was there. Um, now that the nursery school is not, do we need to look at the playground?
That's relatively new, by the way.
Yes, I understand. And, yes, I understand that as well.
The, the question is, I think with the playground, there's been some question about safety and its closeness to the road, um, and whether that, there's no question that needs structure and everything else, whether that is the safest place for it. And I think maybe we should put a group together, maybe the chamber and, and, uh, somebody from the, or two from the restroom committee and, and brainstorm. Make some ideas, um, and the concern about that playground, get some more information on that. Dave?
You know, I'm 100% in favor of enlarging the bathroom, or even making four of them, because I think that would be a solution to a long-term problem downtown for shoppers, uh, and also if it's heated in the winter, uh, it, it, it's just an idea made in heaven. I think that, uh, I would support budgeting that and doing it, and I think it would be a, something that everybody would appreciate.
We'll continue that conversation.
I'll just say, historically, for those that are new, the, uh, the town voted to tear the, uh, station down and voted $5,000, but Don Halleck, in particular, was an engineer who also built the monitor fire station at the, uh, at the Clark complex, and he got together, uh, a group, uh, enthusiasts to rebuild this, rebuild the railroad station, and also to have the Wolfboro Railroad, uh, and he's an unsung hero in our history, but he was very instrumental in saving that and improving it.
Okay, is there any other business? All right, uh, committee reports. I will start then with Paul, who come forward.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, I took a little respite, uh, last time, so I missed our Selectmen's meeting, but we've had, uh, we've had a meeting of the town's Energy Committee, uh, and there, uh, as a part of that meeting, I, I've been in contact with, um, the town of Sterling, Massachusetts. They're about the same size as Wolfboro. I mentioned this to the board a few weeks ago, we're planning a field trip down to Sterling with the Energy Committee during the first week of October. We've posted up some dates and we're gonna get some folks to go. Uh, just as a reminder, these, uh, these folks have a municipal electric company and they're doing some, I think pioneering things around, uh, generation and storage. Uh, they know Barry, Barry knows them, which is actually pretty cool. Uh, I, we're, we're starting to write recommendations into the Master Plan Energy Committee. Uh, we've kind of parsed out the work, that's going along. Mary and I have the duty of doing something, we haven't gotten together yet, so we're guilty of not doing that. Uh, but that's about all I can report. I've, and I've gone to infrastructure meetings, but, uh, nothing else of major import.
Okay, Dave Senical?
Uh, I've been to quite a few meetings, the Land Use, um, Committee, the Buildings Committee, I've also been to Friends of Abenaki, Conservation Commission, Energy Management Today. Um, that's all I've done.
Brad?
Uh, yeah, let's see, we had a Planning Board meeting last night, um, last week, was it last week? I believe it was, we had, uh, no, we, it was last week, the Master Plan, Transportation Infrastructure, uh, Committee meeting. Um, Friends of Libby Museum, I ended up having to skip last week, cause we ended up having a board of selectmen's meeting on that Thursday night, and our Wolfboro Community TV meeting that was gonna be on Tuesday is now gonna be next Tuesday, because too many of us couldn't meet it, couldn't make it to that one, so, that's it for me.
Okay, um, I went to the Chamber Executive Board meeting, I've gone to two community facilities meeting, um, I joined Brad at an Infrastructure and Transportation, and those both are from the Master Plan. I went to an Economic Development Committee meeting, I represented the town on a legal issue, and I went to the Emergency Management Meeting this morning, and we're almost have that, um, Emergency Managed Operations Plan together, so that's moving on. Dave Bowers?
I have to say that Linda works almost full-time, being a selectman, embarrassing me terribly, but, uh, she spent like, uh, all, all day in court with Mrs. Fay and things like that, and she doesn't tell much about it, but boy, does she do a lot of work. Uh, I went to the EDC meeting, uh, and, uh, then I've been doing a little survey, I think the Selectmen and should address the Conservation Commission, I have a conservation map of conserved areas, we probably have several dozen, uh, mo, and hardly any of them are marked, and I think, uh, we'd like to have a guide to them. Some like, uh, like Ryfield Marsh are completely deteriorated, and I don't think we can rely on a, any committee with a half a dozen volunteer members to maintain something, so they should either have a budget, or I suggest it maybe move the management over to the Parks and Rec for, for a couple of these things, uh, just because Parks and Rec has a staff. Uh, so I think that's an objective. I've also been making, uh, nothing to do with the town officially, but making some notes of new businesses and things, new streets, just cause I keep a database and that. I'm quite surprised at the number of businesses in town, I corresponded with Mary DeBries, uh, many of them don't belong to the Chamber of Commerce, I can't realize why, but anyway, these, uh, I love observing Wolfboro, and I've been spending a lot of time doing that.
Okay, uh, do we, let's see, Town Manager's Report.
So, um, I provided something in writing, and we'll put that up on the webpage, but in the interest of time tonight, I, I would like to ask if it would be all right if we form an advisory committee on cemeteries. Given the number that we have and the amount of work I think that needs to be done around that topic, it would be helpful to have some guidance.
Uh, would you like to do that by advertising it to the public?
Um, I think that would also be a good solution. We have a core group of maybe- We have a core group of maybe four or five people that I think we would consider initially, but yes, yes.
So we can put something in the paper and ask somebody if they, anybody who's interested or might have some expertise that we don't know about. Is the board okay with that?
Yep. And then things that didn't make it into the report, well, I'll also just say I went on the museum loop, and it's absolutely fantastic. So if anyone gets a chance to do that, I would highly recommend it. You can take the half-day or the whole-day version. I took the half-day and took a nice boat ride on the Millie B and went to the Libby, and got to go around town and avoid the traffic on Molly the Trolley. So that was, that was time well spent. I see why many, many people come here in the summer. So things that didn't make it on the list, there is a public notice, Pine Street Water Main Replacement Project. Starting the week of July 30th, the town of Wolfboro's will contract with GW Brooks to replace the water line on Pine Street. Residents and businesses within the construction zone will have temporary water during the construction. You will be contacted by town staff to connect the temporary water line. And so we would appreciate the public's patience as we go through that process. There could be an occasion for utility outages. We hope that doesn't happen, but you, you plan for the worst and hope for the best. There are contact numbers listed in the public notice in case there are issues. I would like to thank Selectmen Harriman for providing information about the FEMA storm event that took place. To date, we've calculated storm costs, and they're approximately $24,600. So that explains what's going on with the Public Works budget to a great degree and should be an opportunity for reimbursement from FEMA.
Perfect.
That's all very good news. The piling information was done in-house, and it was relatively straightforward. I think that's it.
Okay. I'd like to make one announcement and try to remember to do this at all the Selectmen's meetings, but we are in the process of doing a master plan, and where there is going to be another master plan forum, I think that's what they're calling it, a forum, on August 21st, 6:30 here at the Town Hall, Grade Hall. And that is to give the public an update on the master plan and take any comments at that time that anybody would like to give the board. And I'll try to remember to do it at the next couple of meetings to make sure we remind the public of that, because that's important that they be a part of that. Okay. Any questions from the press?
Does the FEMA reimbursement go into the general fund? Or does that go into the Public Works budget?
Every place that I've worked, it's just been a general fund revenue. I don't think that there's any, any policy to the contrary here.
Yeah, and I don't know whether there's any bookkeeping that is done with the staff that were used to do that, whether that is offset at all with our bottom line. I'm not quite sure, but I think there is something of that once we get that payback. But I.
That's what I was wondering, if it offset, you were mentioning that makes up for that problem, so the Public Works being overspent.
Madam Chairman, I didn't hear the question. I didn't hear the question. Is it, where does the, if we were to get it, where would the money go?
Considered unanticipated revenue.
Right.
Yes.
And what I'm not sure is whether we get to write that off, the employees that did that, their overtime and stuff, that somehow it affects the bottom line of the budget. I'm not sure of that, but I think we could ask that question, couldn't we?
Yes. And I also, Mr. Harriman, perhaps you could tell us, do you know where it goes in the community that you work in?
I believe that there it goes into the general fund.
So the brief answer is, we think it goes in the general fund.
At least at this moment.
Okay. So that helps, somewhere along the line. And could you remind me about the public safety complex? What is your target date for construction?
I think it was 2000, I think Warren Archeles go out in 2022.
Okay.
I think that's when it is.
Thank you.
It's a way out.
Okay. Now it's time for public input. Three minutes per resident, not to exceed 15 minutes. Do we have anybody in the audience who'd like to give us any comments? Seeing none, I'd like to have a motion to go into non-public session. Do I have a second? Yes, Paul?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes? Okay.